If you could all mute and we'll be starting in just under a minute.
This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 4th, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Thank you as always to the good folks at East Hampton Media for bringing these meetings to you. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic under an executive order with an extension by Governor Baker initially made on March 12th, 2020 and extended to April 2022. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak or will be speaking during the public hearings. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara, could we have the roll call, please?
Hey, Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby. Erica Flood.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak. Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zerrit.
Present.
Will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. United States of America.
Republic.
Republic. We understand. One nation.
Under God.
In the middle. In the middle. With liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 7th?
So. Approve the minutes?
Second, did someone second that?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Hey, Coniff.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And now we have public speak. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to make a comment? Go ahead and raise your hand under the reaction. Oh, Stephen, I saw you raise your hand. If you would like to go ahead and make a comment, you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alright. Hello, my name is Stephen John. I'm currently a member of the Energy Advisory Committee and also was a former chair of that committee from 2018 to 2020, now just a member on the committee. Our role in the city charter is to advise and assist the city and its agencies and agents in developing priorities, policies and programs focused on cost-effective energy use, energy conservation and renewable energy generation. I personally have nearly 15 years of experience in the energy industry and my role, my current job is to study long-term aspects of transitioning the power grid to a zero-carbon future, which I know is some of the goals of our city as stated going forward, along with other members in the committee that have valuable experience in the energy industry. The Energy Advisory Committee has some questions and concerns regarding Agenda Item 8. It's on tonight's agenda for a bond of nearly $6.5 million for energy efficiency improvements and new solar facilities. And we just wanted to respectfully request any action be deferred on this item at tonight's meeting and the proposal be properly vetted by the EAC at our upcoming August 16th meeting at 6:00 PM. We are encouraged, the city is taking action to reduce its carbon footprint, but we also want to ensure that we are doing so in an efficient and cost-effective manner that is cognizant of the additional burden on taxpayers. And just to give an example, some of the stuff we've done in the past, we had a proposal for doing a lighting retrofit of the wastewater treatment plant back a couple of years ago. And the consultant that had proposed replacing every single light with LEDs in the building. Some of them included lights that were only on for five hours a year, but they wanted to replace them for a very high cost. We actually went through that proposal, vetted out ones that were not going to have a very large payback or quick payback to save the rate or taxpayers' money, but also to get as high energy efficiency payback as we could. So that's just some of the examples that we've done in the past and we hope that we can work together with the proposal from Honeywell going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. And just for clarification, Stephen, it'll be a first reading tonight and it will be moved to the Finance Committee. So please attend that when it, when it happens. We'd love to have you there.
We will do. And also it'd be great if we could have some attendance at our Energy Advisor Committee too going forward. We could.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Anyone else who has a comment for public speak? Okay. Alright, we have a few minutes before we have to get to the public hearing. We have a couple of things to talk through as a group, but I will first open it up to any communication from elected officials, boards and committees if you would like to have any commentary on anything. Counselors there?
Just really quickly, President Coniff and for the council and the public attending, I will be present for through the public hearings, but then I will be signing off. I have a conflict, so I just wanted to make that clear while I will be at the rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Rist?
Just an announcement. I finally got word from Representative Carey that our charter changes are finally out of legis, or in a legislative committee. And he gave us a tentative date of September 14th when there will be a hearing. That's almost two years since we submitted them, so the House or the legislation, legislation. Our legislators work slowly, but anyway, I may be reaching out to Councilors Peak and Gomez to attend that hearing on the 14th, so put that date in its tentative right now.
And that's the 14th of what, Counselors?
September.
September, okay. Alright, thank you. That's good news. Anything else from any of the counselors? Okay, I have a couple of quick announcements. We do want to have a full council discussion around how we meet in person or hybrid or remotely probably in September. So that may, that conversation may get deferred until after the public hearings tonight because it's a little longer of a conversation. But I did want to just say thank you to the Northampton Health Department in coordination with the East Hampton Health Department in bringing two pop-up vaccination clinics to East Hampton last week. Thank you to the East Hampton Health Director Bree Eichstad, who took an idea and turned it into a successful event. Thank you also to Robin Bellicky at the East Hampton Community Center and Mike Supersant at Biggie's for giving us and graciously providing the space for the clinics. Also, thank you to the East Hampton Fire Department for relocating a large public health trailer from one clinic to the other in the middle of the day. And lastly, I want to thank doctors, dentists, nurses, nurse practitioners who give of their time so freely. And when a volunteer is needed to provide the vaccination shots, they raise their hands quickly and always say, what do you need? And when should I show up? So I want to thank them. They are always there and they are always very professional and cheerful. The East Hampton Clinic provided first and second vaccination shots to 64 people, which is a record for these pop-up clinics. We obviously hope for the day when we don't need to have these clinics, but until then, thank you to Northampton and East Hampton Health Departments for helping to keep us all safe. I also received a letter from Sheriff Kay Helane. I just want to read it into the record. Dear Margaret, I'm ready to inform you that effective July 1st, 2021, the Hampshire Sheriff's Office will no longer bill Hampshire County municipalities for use of the Hampshire County Regional Lockup. Other counties that operate regional lockups are no longer, are under no obligation to collect fees from their cities and towns. I believe that fairness dictates that this should be the case, case in Hampshire County as well. I address the costs associated with the Hampshire County Regional Lockup with the Office of Administration and Finance in our fiscal '22 maintenance budget narrative, which was submitted this past January. I participated in a 2019 Subcommittee that examined sheriff's regional lockups in the Commonwealth that also helped inform me on this decision. I am confident that my office will be able to fulfill our obligations to our cities and towns and our state police in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 34, which outlines the requests made by cities and towns when the facility was designed and built 1998 to 2001. Please know that we continue to upgrade the facility's systems to maintain current requirements and safety measures. My staff and I are looking forward to continuing our ongoing commitment to public safety and the health and wellbeing of our local communities. Sincerely, Patrick J. K. Helane, Sheriff. Alright. We still have five minutes. I don't know, Dan, should we start the conversation or just move into? If you want to move into anything in particular? You're on mute.
I think we could go ahead at.
Okay.
If we're a little late on the public hearings, it won't matter.
Okay, so I just want to, so one of the items and, you know, I apologize retroactively for sending you a couple of emails weeks ago saying, hey, we're going to meet in person. It's a little more complicated than just going back to city council because we are now open. We've opened ourselves up to, to remote and we'd like to continue that. The mayor has accepted the MGL that allows us to do these remote meetings with the council being remote and the public, we are also now allowing to be remote with us. So when we think about going back, let's, let's use September 1st as a straw man date. The, kind of the thoughts that I had were one, we should probably, since Google Meet is the direction for East Hampton as a city in terms of an application along with other Google application platforms, we should probably transition into a hybrid using that application. So that's number one. It has been tested as of yesterday. It works fine in city council. The, the microphones within city council chambers are picked up by Google Meet and go out onto the screen. So that works. So the question then is, do we as a council want to go back to the city council chambers in a couple of different permutations? One permutation is only the city council will be in city council chambers. Any city department head, including the mayor, could also be in city council chambers and the public would be remote on Google Meets. That's one option. The other option is you have all of us in city council and a limited amount of the public in the building with us in city council chambers. I don't know what that would look like or what the number would look like. Let's call it 20 at most with chairs separated throughout the room. Or we just open it up, everybody goes back, we're all back, they're all back. And then the question is, do we require masks or do we not require masks? So there's a lot of options here and I kind of wanted to hear from all of you about your thoughts on how we move forward in this new normal. So does anybody have any thoughts on direction they'd like to go in? Counselor Rist?
I'm very happy to hear that Google Meets works. I like the hybrid and I think we should move forward that way. I think since our city is open, our city building is open, since restaurants are open. I attended a theater performance, a movie. It was completely open. I think our democracy should be open. I like the passion that is brought to our meetings. I think the city, City Hall is using mask mandate for non-vaccinated persons. I don't know how we deal with that. But if we require every attendee to wear a mask, I'm assuming all the counselors are vaccinated. So I feel we should start doing that. But I also am happy to defer to the full council. I just wanted to debate it with all of us, see how everybody felt, but I'd like us to get back to it. We had a couple of very passionate meetings where something was being discussed and, and the attendance of the public, the passion they showed at the podium, that's missing. There is a certain disconnect in Zoom, so I'd like us back there. That's just me.
Okay. I saw Counselor Zerrit. Did you want to say something, Counselor Zerrit? And then I, and then next is Counselor Flood.
I did. Thank you, President Coniff. I, I think that I'm generally of the same mind as Vice President Rist. I think that we just have to be, we've got to cling very closely to current, both local and CDC recommendations. I think currently right now with this, what we had seen as a downtrend of cases and now kind of a vacillation, mostly probably due to the Delta variant. I think we just have to stay in touch with our health director and make a determination. I don't have a concern with us all going back into chambers. I think that we have to figure out if there is some sort of max zone density, but I agree with, with Counselor Rist that that's speaking from a precaution that doesn't currently align with other policies in place in terms of what restaurants and other indoor areas are, are allowing. So I, I do agree that we should be parallel with, with the rest of the regulations and, but be, be dynamic, not stay in one spot. And just, and continue to just be vigilant and move with the rest of what everyone else is doing. That's all.
And Counselor Zerrit and Counselor Rist, when you say and bring the, you know, kind of the public is allowed back in, are you saying with no restrictions on the number of people in that space? Within the limits of the fire requirements, but I mean, are you saying that however many people want to come can come?
I, I would do the six feet. I, I would do the six feet. I like that notion. We get, we get in there and we set up all the chairs six feet apart and then we have a count. And I guess we have to figure out a way to monitor that.
Right. Okay. Counselor Flood?
Um, actually, that's one of my first questions is, you know, i- is there any guidance currently on, on capacity for the building? So I would defer to whatever is coming down from the state and the CDC level on that, but I certainly want to. I've had a lot of feedback from residents who are, who have not been comfortable using Zoom, who would like to attend in person. So I do hear the need and the desire to get back in chambers with everyone. With the Delta variant, I'm also just concerned and watching what's happening with those trends, so I want us to proceed with as much caution as possible. I would be in favor of a mask, using a mask, requiring or mandating, whatever the language is, inviting folks both vaccinated and unvaccinated to protect themselves with a mask. I can tell you that I've known more than one person who's been vaccinated, who's contracted COVID. So I don't think this is something to be taken lightly. But I do hear the response from the public that they would like to be back in chambers and for those of them who are you know, happy to take the risk to be in attendance. I'm also very much for obviously using the hybrid model for those who are not comfortable coming in and I'm very grateful to the staff at East Hampton Media for making that work for us. So my vote is to be back in chambers as safely as possible, as soon as possible, and offering the hybrid option for those residents who are not yet comfortable joining us in chambers.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peak?
You're muted, Tom. I sure am. So my one area where I, I am really eager to get back is that there's a lot of votes that we take, like procedural votes that right now have to be roll call votes. And it can be voice votes outside, like if we're in chamber.
If one of us is not there.
Yes, then, so, so no one, right, but um, so, so there, that I'm excited about. And I definitely agree that like, you just get a better read of the room and the people when you're in person. So that all I'm excited about. You know, I have always said, or my, my position on this, as you know, Madam President, has been that we should be remote until we get things set up in a way that people who want to continue attending remote can do so. It sounds like from, if I understand you correctly, we're kind of there. So that's really encouraging. In terms of whether people should wear masks, what the capacity should be, all of that. I don't know if they would actually like this burden, but, but my kind of a, one, one thing that I, I just want to throw out there is maybe engaging with the Health Department and the Board of Health in terms of what, what they think we should do in terms of those restrictions and with that evolving situation. Because I just feel like none of us, I mean, with the potential exception of our, our one medical professional here, but I, I don't really feel like, I don't feel like I'm in a position to really say what's safe and not safe in this like, you know, expanding situation, but if like, if we approached the Health Director of the Board of Health and said, hey, we want to have meetings. We want some sort of policy on what's safe and we want that policy to be you know, subject to updates if circumstances on the ground change. I wonder if they'd be open to, to that sort of to, to, to helping with that and maybe leading to a situation that, that, that worked maybe a little bit better.
Yeah, and I think, I, and while I'm certain that Bree would be all in on this, but I also want to touch base with the city attorney. If we decide to restrict or six feet or, you know, whatever permutation we use, I also want to make sure we're checking with the city attorney to make sure we're not in violation of anything there. So I think both of those are really good ideas. Counselor Rothschild?
Um, I, I would also be for going back. At this point, I would want everyone wearing masks. But again, agile to what the, what the CDC says, but I've noticed employees in restaurants and stores starting to wear masks again, so given where we are right now, I would want everybody to wear masks. If we're going back tomorrow, I would want everyone wearing a mask. Perhaps like, if someone's coming up to the podium to talk, they could pull theirs down. They're not near anyone. If one of us is talking, maybe we can pull it down. But generally, I think better, we're in a good position because we stayed on the side of safety.
Okay. Alright, that's really, Counselor Kuzinski?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, good. I appreciate everyone's positions and sharing on this. I would weigh in for wearing masks during all sessions and that being a requirement. I think we're just too much fluctuating back and forth with the, the numbers and the variant. And I do agree that we need to keep a very close look and would certainly appreciate the guidance of our Board of Health and Health Agent in, in the matter. In terms of numbers, I think at some point when we do come back, we ought to really strongly consider limiting the numbers. I, I'm not sure what the capacity of the room is, 100 people, but limiting the numbers significantly. At least as we put our foot into the water and try to get back. But my, my inclination is that we will have that hybrid system. Folks will be able to not be there or be there. I do appreciate the passion that can develop as we, as we are in a safe room together and that can be good and bad sometimes. But I do appreciate seeing everyone's face at one time and, and that is one thing that I, I find at the, at the full council in session. I don't always get to see everyone's face. So there is an appreciation for reading reactions and getting it that I never thought I would think about before we started this process well over a year ago. So I'm kind of going to wait and see to, to, to see what the guidance is and how the numbers work out at this point.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I think, I think we're all in agreement that we want to get back into that room and we want to engage with the public, so the technology yesterday worked quite well and the, you know, the only, and I, I do think we should check with the Health Agent. I, I have a little trepidation around starting both hybrid with a new system i- in a format we haven't done before, right out of the gate. I guess I was kind of hoping we would just start with department heads and us, but I'm completely open to having the public there and we can, you know, trip through it if we have to in terms of, you know, the technology. I will, I will talk to Corinne, our IT person, to figure out if there's anything different we need to do, what, what I, what she has gracious, well, I won't say graciously because the mayor paid for it, but we do have now a city council laptop that we will be using for those hybrid meetings during city council. And I want to be very clear that this is just a discussion around city council, not about all the other boards and committees. That I think is a bigger deal because the technology was only put into the city council chambers. But I also don't think it's a big deal to create a hybrid with a laptop in the other room. So that's a bigger discussion. This is just for city council meetings, getting back into chambers and what you guys all thought about it. So I will work toward the September 1 date. And as we get closer, if there's any bumps in the road, I'll let you guys know. But that will be our target right now to do that and I'll check with Bree and the city attorney to find out if there's anything we're not considering, but really appreciate all your input and I'm happy to see that we're all ready to, to go back, although Barbara may not be. Barbara, yes.
I, I just, whoop, sorry, brother. I just had a question pegged because I'm, depending on if there's any public hearings that are set tonight, I have to know by tomorrow how the rap, how the ads are going to run. Whether it's going to be, so do I put in person at 50 Pace and do I put by Zoom? I mean, what do I put?
Can I, can I ask, Barb? I thought we had two weeks. Can you wait?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not, okay. No, no, you're right. I do have a little more time. I'm sorry.
So maybe, maybe that deadline is two weeks from now as if there was another council meeting and you could.
Yep.
By then, they may have a.
Yep.
A final answer.
I'm thinking the wrong, I, I would need to know by the 21st. Well, no, the, the week after next, I need to know.
Okay. So like the 18th, 17th, 18th, somewhere in there?
Well, I have to get the ad to the Gazette, so I need to know no later than the 18th.
Okay. Alright, I should have a better feel. The other thing I just want to put out there is this, this will be a little different for the public who will be joining our meetings remotely. It's obviously not going to be Zoom. They may have to download Google Meet, so there's all of that too. So we may have to do a little PR to explain that before we do it. So, um, okay. And the reason, just one last thing and I may have already said it. The reason we decided to go with Google Meet is because we're phasing out Zoom and why start a fresh thing with an old technology that's going to be gone? So we might as well just do it all at once. And also Zoom didn't work in city council yesterday. So. Alright, thank you, everyone. Really appreciate your input.
I move the public hearings to be open.
Second.
Open the public hearings. Any discussions? Barbara?
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Hey, Coniff.
Aye. Okay, the public hearings are now open. First thing is utility co-location. Counselor Zerrit. Oh, Counselor Zerrit, are you also doing the city ordinance amendment thing for Counselor? Okay, so we can, okay, so go ahead with the poll.
Okay, so we met a couple of weeks ago, the Property Committee met to discuss the proposed, this proposal by Eversource to install three jointly owned midspan poles and relocate four existing poles along Tory Street. Just to summarize that meeting, it, it looks like they're moving the, the poles to align them within property lines, so that they're not in the middle of a property. And that would also put the anchors along property lines and again, not in, right in front of a, a parcel. Reviewing the information that we had available to us, we made a preliminary recommendation. It was myself and Counselor Flood. Counselor Kuzinski was not able to attend. We made a preliminary recommendation to recommend this to the city council. The Eversource rep misunderstood the time of the meeting and sent apologies. And I've communicated, I had communicated with them and sent them information for tonight. But I'm not sure if I see them here and I just want the pause for a second just to check what I'm seeing in front of me on Zoom. Is, is there a representative here from Eversource? So we have a preliminary recommendation, but it really would help, especially with the number of poles involved. And I always like to get input to understand more of the scope of the project, the reasoning, et cetera. of the project, the reasoning, et cetera, uh to be able to have them speak to uh the intentions of of this project. So I I I um, I have a difficult time moving this forward today. I would likely move to continue this discussion until we can get an Eversource rep here to speak more to this. If uh anyone has questions or input, I'm willing to hear that.
Counselor Rist. You're mute.
Uh, Owen, um, my concern would be, is this in conjunction with any construction project that is ongoing for the city or for residents, because it's going to be a month before we talk about this again. And I I only ask because this is standard procedure. Um, did they not show up at your meeting? Is that what you're telling us?
They were neither at our committee meeting and I don't see them here tonight, and so I can't
That's a different story then, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I can't speak to what projects it may be in conjunction with or the intent or necessity of both moving these polls and installing the new ones. I mean, it seems to be relatively clear on paper, but it, you know, I I I know it's just, you know, we make generally these poll votes go pretty much unanimously, but I just feel for the sake of the public in this council, from my standpoint, I would want to make sure that we have at least a cursory explanation uh from the reps of Eversource. That's just my opinion.
I think you're right.
I agree. I agree. So uh, do you want to make a motion to continue this public hearing?
Yes, President Cobb, at this point, um, I would uh like to make a motion to continue this public hearing until uh September first.
Second.
Motion second to continue the public hearing on the utility co-locations to September first. Any further discussion? Uh, Counselor Zerret.
But I I have, I feel I've maintained a good line of communication with Eversource, but I always understand maybe there was some miscommunication, and so what I will do is reach out to them with a list of uh questions about this. So you know, in case September first rolls around, they're not there again, I'll I'll str- I'll be very clear to them that we really would value their attendance. Uh, but I'll send out as many questions I can think of about this issue. And at least have some answers. Um, and certainly I'll include Counselor Rist's questions with that.
Okay, and you're and you have another poll location coming up to
Correct.
Yeah. Um, okay, any further discussion? Barbara.
Okay, I I just want to mention that whenever we get poll location requests, sorry, before the vote, they always provide postcards, um and I send them to all the abutters and to Eversource and to Verizon, and I put on a little sticker with the Zoom link. So there's really no excuse for them not to be at these meetings because they provide the envelope, the the um postcards and everything's on it. So I I this is the like the second time this has happened, and it it's a little baffling to me why they don't send a representative that they really want these to move forward.
I would agree.
That's just my thought on it.
Good thought.
Um, Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi. Okay, that public hearing will be continued. Um, next up, we have supplemental appropriations from the CPA fund. Actually, Counselor Rist, does it matter if we flip flop the order?
Do all of them.
Okay, Counselor Zerret, why don't you go ahead with the uh the plastic?
I I appreciate that, President Coniff, and again, that'd be clear that I'm gonna, I'm going to exit the meeting after after this this item. Uh, so this was after we we passed uh the the full amendment regarding um restriction of single-use plastics and and the language on straws. There were a couple items uh through discussions with uh both city representatives and members of the public that I realized that I had, there were certain intentions of the language and it wasn't fully covered, and so I'll summarize those briefly um and then just really quickly go over the language, um as was discussed in in the uh the ordinance meeting with uh Chairperson Derby and uh Cal- and Committee Member Peak. So I I thought that the initial language covered um newspaper bags. I was s- I swore that I was that I was under the impression it was pretty clear that uh the bags used for newspapers uh were meant to be biodegradable, and somehow, looking back over that, that that wasn't evident. So we wrote language to be clear about newspapers and periodicals uh that that they also be delivered in bags uh that are um that are in compostable uh packaging, just like the other bag requirements we have in the city. Um, also, in speaking with uh some environmental activists, as well as other cities that have that recently passed uh plastics language, um there was a discussion about aluminum containers because when you look at events with catering, for instance, where there's a large amount of food, aluminum seems to be the prevailing material uh for for these containers and there's significant differences between using aluminum uh and using um uh polystyrene containers in terms of uh the ability to recycle aluminum. While it's not optimal, uh uh we would, we would want people to try to use some form of compostable containers. They're just not really available in terms of mass market, and we felt that um it was reasonable to at least allow that for things like, you know, if you're getting taken, if you're getting catering some, say, Nini's, you're getting a huge tray of lasagna, that it was acceptable to use aluminum, and that pretty much was um uh not an issue in terms of some of the people that were involved in the broader conversations from an environmental standpoint. Um, and then um in speaking with Bree, there is a concern about the way that the language was created in terms of how businesses would come forward to the Board of Health to ask for uh abatements. And so instead of a public hearing process, we created language to basically allow the the Board of Health to create a form that um could be submitted to the Board of Health and reviewed and um either approved or denied in terms of uh the the abatement process that was within the ordinance language. And uh, so the ordinance committee met about these three items um and didn't seem, didn't have any specific concerns uh and recommended this three nothing to the city council.
Any discussion from counselors? Counselor Rosha? You're on.
Um, so I'm going to bring up something to do with this ordinance that came out in the ordinance review process, and I figured since we're on the ordinance, might as well see what others think. Um, it's about the plastic straws, and I think people probably know what the issue is. We were looking at the um ordinances for bias and discrimination, and when talking with the Commission on Disability, I really come to understand that the straw banning plastic, not banning, I know they're available upon request, but that places an undue burden on people with disabilities. I've really come to understand from talking to people, the experience of living in a world that's not built for you. And when you want a straw, you have to come forward and discuss your disability. It puts people in an uncomfortable um in places unfair burden on people with disabilities. I think that we are being very careful with businesses not to put undue burdens, and we also need to treat our disabled population with the same respect. There's other things we can do to discourage the use of plastic straws, like ask businesses to maybe have two containers where each are labeled. But I would also like to propose a further amendment if that's in order to strike six dash two one, two point five from this ordinance with consideration of making this an inclusive, universally designed East Hampton, and I do have a very um well-written letter from the Commission on Disability, which I'll send to you guys, and I'm happy to read it if you like that. I can't hear you. I can't hear you, you're still muted. You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, I will read it. Dear Lindsay, thank you for approaching the Commission for our opinion on the plastic straw ordinance. As I mentioned in our June meeting, there are many elements of a ban that are problematic from a disability rights perspective. Many prominent disability rights organizations have done a great job of articulating these pitfalls. And I urge you to inform your decisions with these perspectives as well. This said, I'll try my best in this letter to do them justice. For many in the disabled community, straws are an essential part of daily life. Disabilities involving muscle specificity, inability to hold a cup, difficulty regulating fluid intake and swallowing, and difficulty bending towards a cup are some of the many reasons that straws are vital to fluid intake. Unfortunately, current alternatives to readily available plastic straws each pose challenges in terms of accessibility or practicality. Biodegradable straws tend to get soggy or break apart, which can be burdensome for those with muscle specificity or who take longer to drink. Other disposable alternatives, such as organic straws, may contain potential allergens like gluten. Some cities have attempted to work around these accessibility issues by creating an opt-in system for plastic straws. Such a system, and this is like we have here, forces people with disabilities to disclose and have a potentially uncomfortable conversation each time they want to drink in public. Moreover, such a system is difficult to enforce and will almost certainly lead to establishments either running out of or being unable to locate alternative supplies. Lastly, there are those who would suggest that people should carry the supplies they need. While some people with disabilities certainly do have to carry many supplies, it is often the case that the need to carry so many supplies creates a huge barrier towards accessing the community. Adding yet one more thing, the carry is potentially prohibitive to allowing people with disabilities to spontaneously enjoy dining establishments like their fellow citizens. Society's goal should always be less to carry, not more. One of the most important frontiers for ensuring the rights of people with disabilities is the idea of universal design. Community and society, we should, as a community and society, we should be promoting elements in the community that disabled and non-disabled people alike can access equally. Somewhat by happensta- somewhat by happenstance, plastic straws are one of those elements. Eliminating them is a step backwards for disability rights. We agree that helping the environment and controlling waste is a key challenge for our generation and generations to come. Developing a flexible plastic alternative for straws and other products is critical. However, we also feel critical that conversations about the betterment of society emphasizes that such improvements do not come to the expense of the most vulnerable populations. Too often through our history, this has been the case, and we can do better. We feel that exempting plastic straws from the ban can make a valuable statement towards these ends and make a positive difference in people's lives. Sincerely, Jeffrey A. Brown, member of the East Hampton Council on Disability.
Thank you. Any, any, Counselor Rist.
Lindsay, does your amendment completely eliminate the language on plastic straws then?
That's what I would do, and I would just try to do like educating and encouraging of local businesses to offer both straws clearly labeled um as an education point.
Counselor Kuzinski.
I would agree. If that's a formal amendment, I mean, formal motion, is that a
No, it can't be.
No, we're not at the motion point yet.
I just was curious because I certainly would second that motion.
All right, uh, Counselor Zerret and then the mayor. Counselor.
So just to be clear, so I I heard those concerns early on, uh but I brought them to a few um environmental rights groups as well as some legal experts on the area. So um while I would agree if uh that if our language specifically singled out people with disabilities and carved out the access to plastic straws specifically for people with disabilities, I would agree with you a hundred percent that you're asking people to declare disability um in the quest for a plastic straw, but we were careful just to create them for by request for everybody. Um, and if you look at large corporations like Starbucks, for instance, they've done similar things where it's straws by request universally and not straws by request, only if you have a disability. So there's really nothing to disclose here, just to be clear. Um, and that's why I didn't include it, just to be clear why, if it seemed like I wasn't listening to those discussions, um even though as the author of this, I I heard about them, but wasn't directly um brought to my attention. Um, if it seemed like I was being insensitive, I wasn't. I did, I did discuss them with both some legal experts as well as environmental experts and did so previously also when we originally wrote the language. So I just wanted to make it clear why I didn't include that with these amendments.
Counselor Rosha. You're here. Go ahead.
Um, I I think, you know, we're all learning, and I fully supported the what you put together in the beginning, and I was on board. Um, and you mentioned you spoke with environmentalists, you spoke with attorneys, but we didn't speak with people with disabilities. And those are the people whose voices need to be lifted up right now, and, you know, we're all learning, we're all doing the best we can, so we're putting in something to protect the environment. And we're learning as we go along, and we have to be agile, and no one's a villain in this, but I think as a council, we can continue to listen to most marginalized and just do better. So that's why I brought it forward.
Okay, um, uh, Mayor, I see your hand is up.
Uh, good evening. Um, my internet connection is not the best, so if, uh, yeah, just heads up. Um, so to this ordinance, I completely support uh Counselor Rothschild um amendment and uh concern. Uh, I would, I would just want to comment as a special education administrator um and licensed school superintendent, this has been an ongoing issue in schools for about a decade, if not longer, about having appropriate um uh straws for those with disabilities that do not um and access that do not have them have to come out saying they have a disability, or more likely, uh, they don't uh go out and have a drink or uh soup or whatever they need a straw for because of that reason that they have to point out the disability. So I would say on this and and similar items, when you're looking at universal design, uh Counselor Rothschild's um uh comment and and amendment um hold a lot of weight in the disability uh community and have for for a long time. Um, so I just wanted to to add that from my perspective.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Counselor Kuzinski.
Uh, while uh I hear Counselor Zerret to say that he had spoken to attorneys, I'm not sure the attorneys are representing the interests of those with disabilities in terms of the human a- aspect. And I think that's what we're here about, not necessarily what's necessarily legal at this time, but from my perspective, what I think is right. Uh, and so I would support Counselor Rothschild in this measure.
Uh, Counselor Zerret.
Yeah, one thing I just want to say is that um while I appreciate the discussion here, I just want to push back a little bit of Betsy's insinu- insinuation that I'm uh not interested in listening to or lifting up the voices of people with disabilities or people who need their voices lifted. There were, there was research and discussion with this language initially and uh more recently with people in the disabled community as well. So I just don't appreciate the insinuation that um I'm not willing to listen to those voices.
Uh, Counselor Flood.
Um, I just want to thank Counselor Rothschild for bringing this forward forward and the members of the commission. I also want to point out that even removing this language uh vis a vis the amendment, those of us who are able to partake in beverages without the use of these plastic straws have the free choice and free will to do so. So then the responsibility is upon our own shoulders to take care of the environment. We can legislate right and wrong all we want, but it's your singular choice every day as an individual to do what's right within your ability. So I too support this amendment. I understand um it's difficult coming in at this timeline of the process because it takes a lot of work to get these things moving forward. Um, but given this information and understanding how it will affect those of our friends and neighbors, um, I think it's the right thing to do, and for the rest of us who can choose to opt out of using a plastic straw, I I just say to us all, let's do it. Let's make the right choices every day. It's that simple. But let's protect the people who don't have the option to opt out. Um, so I just want to thank you for bringing this information forward. And I know it can be difficult to get to the end of this process and have changes like this, but it does feel like the right thing to do for our neighbors.
You. Any other city councilor before I open it up to the public? Okay, anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on uh the overarching changes to the um plastic ordinance, including a potential amendment? plastic ordinance, including a potential amendment for straws? Okay, I don't think anyone else has any comments. Councillor Zerrit, if you would like to go ahead and make your main motion?
Yes, and I also have an amendment. Actually, before that, too, I'll plan to amend this as well in talking to the Health Director. We also feel that the ordinance should not go into effect until January 1st, 2022. So you'll hear an amendment in that regard as well. Let me just find this. I threw the help of our clerk as usual. I have a motion for this.
Could I ask Councillor Zerrit, what is the reason for not putting it in place until January of 2022?
In talking to the, in talking to Bree, it's now August, we've made a few changes. They're going to need to make this form for deferments. And then it sounds like mostly because of the pandemic, the Health Department wants to do a better job of informing informing businesses about the ordinance. There's been some discussion about it, but as it stands now, it would be, this would go into effect in about two months. And they just want a little bit more time, which I certainly had no issue with on my end, but I just wanted to put it forward to everyone else. They felt that they'd be better organized to do it, to have it. Correct.
Okay. All right, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so the main motion, I move to amend the city ordinance's Chapter 6, Section 6-21, prohibition of single-use plastic bags, disposable food containers and straws to add the requirement for compostable newspaper packaging, allowances for aluminum containers for food packaging catering, and administrative changes to the hardship deferment process.
Lindsey? Yep, go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to, can I just say to additionally strike 6-21.2.5 from this ordinance and also remove the word straws from the title, section dash 2.1.
I second the amendment.
Okay, so well, Councillor Zerrit?
I'd like to recommend, I'd like to recommend an amendment to Counselor Rothschild's amendment.
Okay, go ahead and make it.
I don't know the exact language, but I would, I would like to, hold on, let me just pull this up. Sorry. Apologize.
I think, I think you need to act on her amendment first and then you can amend it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so go ahead, Barbara, if you want to, if there's, yeah, go ahead. JP Krasinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerrit?
I'm staying.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez? Okay, so the amendment, what did you say, Omar?
Hi.
Okay, so the amendment passes and Owen, you want to make a new amendment? To the amendment?
Yes, I'd like to recommend simply striking the first section of 6-21.2.5. That reads, "No retail food establishment shall transfer disposable plastic straws unless requested by the consumer." I'd like to strike that, but continue to include the the language that follows that, which is retail food establishments are encouraged to offer consumers compostable straws. And the reason then doing so is listening to the information brought forward today by Counselor Rothschild is that I, I understand what the councillor is saying, and I think this could be a fair compromise where businesses still are held to an environmental standard and offer straws available to consumers that are not as harsh on the environment if consumers choose to use compostable ones.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
Better.
Motion second to strike the first sentence under 6-21.2.5. And any, Counselor Rothschild?
If it just says they're encouraged to offer consumers compostable straws, it feels like we're not addressed, like, people might think like, okay, good, I'm going to do that instead of plastic straws. Does it mandate that they have to have plastic straws? So that's my concern with that. And then saying are encouraged isn't really an ordinance. It's, it's just a so I'm just wondering about that, too.
Councillor Rist and then Councillor Peak?
I am confused in that the first sentence seems to go along with Lindsey's amendment, taking the language of, of plastic straws out, but leaving in the language that exists. Am I correct, Councillor Zerrit? For?
Correct.
So Lindsey, in your amendment, you didn't touch that particular section?
Yeah, I did the whole sentence because I feel like if we put retail food establishments are encouraged to offer consumers compostable straws and we don't mention plastic straws at all, businesses might think like, okay, and, and I'm supposed to have, then I think we have to mandate that they also have plastic straws so that people with accessibility issues can get the straws. Like, it just seems, if it's just that, it's first of all, it's an encouragement, it's not really an ordinance. And then people might think they don't need to have the plastic straws.
I think, may I, Madam President?
Yes, go ahead.
I think this, this amendment that's being offered by Councillor Zerrit is unnecessary. It goes against what Lindsey's trying to do, and I think from my perspective, I understand what Councillor Zerrit is trying to do and perhaps further discussion on this at the ordinance level could find some compromise. On the other hand, I don't think we should confuse the public, which is I think what Lindsey's saying, or confuse the businesses, the restaurants about what they're supposed to offer. So I think striking all the language that was originally the intent of Counselor Rothschild is the way we should go. I did second the motion for a discussion, but I would be voting against this amendment.
Okay, Councillor Peak?
Just to be clear, there's nothing in this ordinance or anywhere else that mandates that a business have plastic straws right now, right? Like, I know there's several businesses that do have compostable straws. We're not suggesting that they in any way like be mandated to, to purchase something else, right? So I guess I just, I, I understand that there's a simplicity thing. I guess I just, like, I, I don't know if I necessarily see the harm in saying that businesses should, should look into offering consumers.
In addition to plastic straws. I just think it's confusing because it's like, it's just confusing because these are a bunch of things, the mandates, and then it is encouraged. It's kind of confusing.
Councillor Zerrit?
Yeah, okay, I hear what you're saying in terms of the language. Let's put, and I appreciate this collaborative discussion. So I'd like to make, take one more crack at the language.
Do you want to withdraw your amendment then?
Let me, yes, let me withdraw my original motion.
And you withdraw your second?
So to amend Section 6-21.2.5 to strike it completely and say retail food establishments shall offer compostable straw options to consumers in addition to to plastic straws.
Don't, I mean, isn't, without an amendment, wouldn't that be true anyway? Like, that you have a variety of straws that you can offer to the public?
It's a requirement to offer them, though, to, to offer a compostable option.
Okay, Councillor Rothschild?
I think this is about education, kind of getting back to what Counselor Flood was saying, like, this is a great place for engaged kids in our community, how they are about anti, not idling, like, make the healthy choice. It's, I don't know that I just, then we're mandating to straws, I think, just like, leave it as it is in the community. That's how it is now. Freedom of the straws.
Free the straw. Okay, do you want to, do you want to make a, an amendment motion, Councillor Zerrit, regarding, or actually, hold on one second. Does anybody have any other comments regarding the addition of are encouraged to offer consumers compostable and plastic straws? Was there more after that?
Was there a motion?
No, there actually wasn't. Owen, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, oh, it looks like the mayor might want to weigh in here.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Maybe being just confused, that's what's on the table, offering an option for the, the different straws. I, I think that puts still the onus on those with a disability to figure out which is which. Sometimes they look the same. And again, like, we have those who don't have a disability or, or wouldn't require plastic straw can ask for something that's compostable or no straw at all. And, and I would agree with the councillors who are making this, you know, this discussion so fully because it's an education issue, but this is really accessibility, regardless of ability, which can be framed a lot of different ways. So I, I first I was like, oh my gosh, this is going on forever. And then I was like, no, this is a civil right. You know, we have federal and state laws around this stuff. And, and we, if we want to be accessible, I, I just don't understand the, the choice. It's, to, to me, it's, it's like when you look at a building and there's an elevator that's kind of hard to get to, like 50-Pace Inn, and then there are stairs, but there's also no ramp. It shouldn't be à la carte, how you want to access your community. It should be all the same. You know, that's why I love the Guggenheim, because there are no stairs and it's, you know, so. Thank you for the opportunity to comment again.
Thanks, Mayor. Councillor Flood?
Um, yeah, I was just sitting here feeling a bit confused, but I've come to the point where I just, I think striking it completely makes the most sense because I think adding back the compostable option still puts that person in a position of having to self-identify. And if even it's only in their own experience, I still, I think striking, I think Counselor Rothschild's original amendment just feels like the right thing to do in this situation. And again, going back to working with businesses and working with the public to make different choices where they're, where they can, just, I mean, and what Counselor Peak said, I mean, there's nothing in here that otherwise states they have to have both options. So why don't we just take straws off the table? And that's where I'm at after this long discussion. I think just leave straws off the table.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, you know, really from a procedural perspective, we have approved the amendment of striking it. I do sense that there is more behind the scenes that needs to be talked about. And so I would encourage the ordinance committee, if they really want to retool 621.2.5, that they do that. But I think this, this council tonight has voted to strike it. And so I think it, it bears another reading and another conversation if there's going to be new language. And so I would encourage the ordinance committee to do that, but I think tonight our vote has shown that it is to strike that. And I saw JP, your hand was up. So if you'd like to have any comments?
I agree with your statement, Madam President. It is the will of the council. I just, for argument's sake, wanted to throw out the possibility, the possibility that we say that plastic straws be somehow the norm and that by request one could order a compostable straw. That would be one option that would kind of, I think, achieve what Counselor Zerrit was looking for. And I think still maintains what the mayor had said about if someone's self-identifying, the only self-identification is, give me a compostable straw because I want to use one. And if we structured the language that way, would it make a difference? Or shall we just leave well enough alone and move forward with the entire ordinance?
You know, and I, I'll take, because I get to be the chair, I'll speak again. And I think that Counselor Rothschild made a compelling argument and that letter really struck me. And where we're heading now, it feels like any change we made, we'd be making it on the fly with not a lot of research, discussion, conversation with the, the community who will be most impacted by this. I think if we, or a subset of us, believe that there is different language for that, it deserves more than just us figuring out words right now. I feel like it deserves a bigger conversation, moving it back to committee, bringing it back here and having a bigger conversation. Right now, it makes sense to me and we all agree to remove that until we can retool it. Because I don't think any of us here have a good idea of what words we want to put in there right now. Councillor Rist, oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Zerrit and then Councillor Rist, whoever was first, I don't know.
To your point, President Coniff, this does deserve a full-throated discussion. There wasn't really one. We had committee meeting, which no one attended to discuss this topic. And as the committee that authors these types of language, no one got in touch with anyone from the ordinance committee or the individuals authoring this. So in terms of it being kind of sudden, without a full-throated discussion, that's kind of what happened tonight. You know, to be somewhat ambushed, you know, without a collaborative discussion about this ahead of time, here's a little off-putting, as well as, again, the prior kind of accusations that I'm not interested in raising up voices of people who are disenfranchised or not as entitled as myself, just to point that out.
Councillor Rist? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This, this, I mean, to be fair, this should have been brought to the committee. I don't think, I don't, to my knowledge, the other committee members hadn't heard of this. I'm fine with it. It all makes sense. I agree with you. But procedurally, it, it feels a little bit like sudden, like you were saying about the language to discuss this. So again, that, that's all I have to say.
Councillor Rist?
I would like to move the question in the sense that we have had a long discussion on this. There is another amendment that needs to be made by Councillor Zerrit for the date change. I'd like him to make that now. I believe the council has spoken. And I also would suggest that this not be stricken from the ordinance committee's agenda so that it can continue to be discussed at the ordinance committee's pleasure. So, Councillor Zerrit, I appreciate it if you would make the amendment to the date that you need to.
Okay, go ahead.
Give you one second for that. So I'd like to make an amendment at this time, move to amend the, I'd move to amend the main motion to replace the existing wording on Section 6-21.5, date of effect, so that it now reads, quote, "This ordinance shall take effect on January 1st, 2022," end quote.
Motion second to change the effective date to January 2022. Wow. Any further discussion? Barbara, Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Krasinski?
Hi.
Okay, that amendment passes. And we're back to the main motion, which has been seconded. And Barbara?
The main motion has amended.
The main motion has amended.
Has amended, oh. Uh, JP, we're gonna take-
I have a, if I may, just a procedural question here, because I'm a little confused. When it comes to our voting on this motion, it sounds like we're putting an ordinance into effect. And I heard Counselor Rist say that this would be kept, suggested we keep it on the agenda in ordinance committee, and that just seems contradictory to me.
No, I'm, I'm-
If it's a matter that is dealing with it, it becomes an ordinance, that's one thing.
Barbara, do you have a comment on that?
Um, well, I mean, you would, you're, you're approving amendments that were brought up tonight, but it certainly can be brought up for further amendments going forward. That's how I see it.
That's all I meant, JP, is that they can continue to discuss it if it's on the agenda. If it's struck from the agenda, someone's gotta bring it back. So rather than bring it back, they can continue to discuss it. Yes, the ordinance is being approved this evening, but that doesn't mean that the committee can't further discuss it, going to your ideas, et cetera.
That makes sense to me now, thank you for the clarification, Counsel Rist.
Okay, oh, Counsel Zaret?
So, as I won't be here, Counselor Peak, do you mind making a point to keep that on our agenda? We might need to extend it?
Sure, I can do that.
For the ordinance committee, alright.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, on the original, uh, ordinance, uh, as presented by Counselor, uh, Zaret tonight, so we will now take the vote, Barbara? Uh, Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak? Okay, motion passes. Alright, um, Counsel Zaret, do you have to run now? I take it?
I do, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Counsel Rist, you have some supplemental appropriations from the CPA.
We do, the first one is very exciting, the Community Preservation Act was designed, for one reason, uh, for one of many reasons, but one of those was affordable housing. The, um, Valley CDC has proposed, um, looking into, in our city, sites that might be available for them to build affordable housing from, I think it was 30 to 50 units. And if I misspeak, Laura Baker's here, and Jamie's here to continue. One thing that's exciting about this is that the money that the CPA is providing also allows the Valley CDC to look into our soon-to-be vacant schools as to whether that architecture would be efficient and affordable for affordable, efficient a- and affordable in the sense of construction for affordable housing. This is ahead of whatever we decide for those buildings in the future, but that information could very much inform this council and, uh, the planning department and everybody about how those buildings might be used for affordable housing. But, uh, I'll let Laura go ahead and explain the, uh, detail of this, but just so you know, the finance committee voted 3 to 0 to approve it, and the, uh, CPA voted 7 to 0 with one abstention to approve it as well. So Laura?
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm Laura Baker, I'm the Real Estate Project Manager for Valley Community Development. And, um, we did put forth, uh, a CPA proposal for pre-development work in East Hampton, the goal of which is to take some of the great planning work that's been done and travel all the way through to shovel in the ground. So pre-development is kind of the bridge between planning, which is really about assessment and data, um, and then construction, which involves, uh, a sequence of steps, including site identification, analysis, physical planning, engineering and architectural planning, permitting, uh, community relations, uh, as well as financing. And so that is kind of the gist of this application. Uh, we wanna look at at least one of the sites that was identified in the, uh, city's recent housing production plan, um, as well as taking a look at the schools in conjunction with the RFP that's being put together for those school buildings. Um, I do have a PowerPoint all about it, I'm thinking it's probably too much detail and you don't need, need it, but I'm happy to run through it if people are interested.
I don't feel it's necessary, but, uh, the will of the council, uh-
Anyone, anyone would like to have, uh, the PowerPoint presented? I think you're off the hook, Laura.
Good choice. Happy to field questions.
I also see Brad Riley from Affordable is here, if he wants to speak to it.
Do you, Brad, do you have anything you'd like to make a comment on?
Honestly, I'm, and it's more just to be here in support of, um, Laura and Valley CDC. I'm on the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, and then also I'm excited to get started on the School Reuse Committee work. Um, and I just know that, um, any work that, uh, Valley CDC is gonna be doing, uh, with these funds could potentially help us in that future endeavor, so, um, I support, um, any efforts that, uh, Valley CDC would like to do today.
Great. Any counselor have any comments or que, oh, I'm sorry, Jamie, go ahead.
Um, so Jeff Bag was unable to attend tonight, he asked me to, uh, relay a statement on his behalf. Basically, that this project represents one of the next steps of, uh, the city's multi-pronged uh, efforts around affordable housing, um, and it's represented one of many strategies, uh, to increase supply of affordable housing. Um, as Laura said, this, uh, takes the Housing Production Plan, moves it to the next step of actually putting a plan into action, uh, and continuing to take steps to build new units. Through the planning, through the planning department, the project will help the city determine which properties, both city-owned and privately-owned, might be most suitable to support the creation of new affordable units. The results of this project will also help provide crucial data and research on the elementary school buildings, inform the RFP process, and help us understand the feasibility of the properties to becoming affordable housing. The planning department fully supports this project and encourages the council to approve this appropriation. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Any counselors have any questions, comments on this? Mayor LaChapelle?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna join with the planning department in, uh, full support of this, uh, use of the funds. Uh, this, the timing could not, uh, be better as we're heading towards the school project, getting to completion and looking at downtown. I, I think we can all agree that the changes in the city and, um, uh, demographics and whatnot we'll get from the upcoming census could paint a very different picture. And I would also just like to, uh, commend and express gratitude to Laura Baker at Valley CDC for her work, with the, the summary, but also the work with members of, of the city staff. So I would, I would ask for a vote in, in the positive on, on this issue.
Thank you, mayor. Counsel Flood?
I just wanna express my support for this, I think it's a very important project. I think the timing of it is incredibly important, as Mayor said. I wanna thank Laura and the planning department for all of your work, and, um, I'm very much in support of this, and I encourage my fellow counselors to support it as well.
Thank you, Counsel Flood. Any other counselors? Anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on this appropriation request? Okay, Counsel Rist?
I'll make a motion that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $58,083, to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Affordable Housing account, $58,083, to be appropriated to the Valley CDC Housing Redevelopment Assessments account, $58,083 for the following purpose, for conducting planning and pre-development tasks necessary for the creation of new affordable rental housing in East Hampton.
Motion second to approve the supplemental appropriation, any further discussion? Barbara? Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Uh, Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem, or, uh, Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
And Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counsel Rist?
The next item is a historic preservation, uh, request from the CPA for a survey of our East Hampton Canal history. This, uh, is a contribution of $15,000 to a multi-city and town, uh, effort to look into the, uh, history of the canal and find sites that are important. We would be in conjunction with Southwick, Russell, Southampton, Westfield, Northampton, and I think there's others, but I think at least those other towns are, uh, in addition. Jamie, was there another town? I think that's all of them, right?
There, there's six, there's six in total. East Hampton, Southwick, Russell, Southampton, Westfield, and Northampton.
Okay, that's the full, so, we're, we're working with these, uh, communities to look into the, uh, history of the canal. Is there someone here? To discuss this, with anyone?
I can-
Jamie, you can go into it further, I just want, as a council to know, the finance committee and the CPA committee voted unanimously to approve this.
Um, so I'll, I'll also wanna add, um, to the list of communities, we, we are working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, on this project. They've been, uh, incredibly helpful in organizing and coordinating the different municipalities to, uh, get to this current point, where we've been meeting for about a year and a half through, uh, the receipt of two DLT, district, local technical assistance grants. And we've developed an RFP to hire consultant that would, basically conduct, uh, a documentation and archaeological survey of the canal route, which, if you're not familiar with it, originally started, uh, in New Haven, Connecticut, was built in the early 1800s, went all the way up to, uh, Northampton. The Connecticut portion is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The Massachusetts section is not. And through conversations with the state, um, Mass Historic, uh, the, there, there, it would need to be documented in its entirety, not one town at a time, so it really forces the regional approach. The, um, each of the six communities is being asked to, contribute an equal amount of $15,000, uh, to hire that consultant. Um, if the project be administered by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, um, and the result of it would be that we would have a, um, inventory of where the canal is in each municipality, who owns those sections of land, whether or not it's on pi, public land or private land, and how we can best preserve it going forward, when things like development prop, when, um, projects for sale, like project, when land is sold, or, or, uh, development projects come into a municipality, we'd be able to work to protect those resources.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public have any comments to make on this appropriation?
If I may, if this is standing, oh, sorry. Hi, I apologize, I'm on my phone and I couldn't find the hand-raising tool. Jamie gave an excellent summary of everything we've been working on for the past year and a half. Um, we've been thrilled at the engagement with all six municipalities, and, uh, we feel that this could really result in a really useful planning tool on many levels.
Shannon, could you just identify yourself as a council?
Sure, I apologize, this is Shannon Walsh, I'm the Historic Preservation Planner for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up or any other questions, so Counsel Rist?
Then I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $15,000, to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation Account, $15,000, to be appropriated to the Hampshire-Hamden Canal Historic Survey Account, $15,000, for the following purpose, for the regional collaboration to hire consultants to assist with historic documentation and preservation of the Hampshire and Hamden portions of the New Haven and Northampton Canal.
Second.
Motion second to approve supplemental appropriation, any further discussion? Barbara?
Oh, uh, Madam President, if I might, I'm sorry, I didn't realize-
Counsel Flood, I didn't see your hand.
It's okay, and I, I didn't realize that we're ready, I just, I just have two questions. I love this project, I love the regional collaboration, I think it's incredibly important. Uh, my two questions would just be, um, do we have a sense of, have the other communities already appropriated these funds? And what happens if one of the six communities does not appropriate the funds? Other than that, I think this is a fantastic project, so I just would like to know logistically, what happens in that situation?
Shannon?
Uh, sure, this is Shannon, happy to jump in. Um, actually, there's a meeting that started 30 minutes ago, Northampton CPC is meeting on this right now. Westfield CPC has, um, approved, they had two meetings, in the second meeting they approved for it to move forward, the next step. Southwick actually has a $25,000 mitigation fund from cellular towers, from, I believe, about 20 years ago, that had to be specifically used for documentation, so they were one of the early municipalities trying to get this started. Russell is, has agreed that they're working on trying to find the, they're the only municipality that did not have CPC or another earmarked fund, but they are definitely interested in, um, procuring the funds and want to be part of this project. And South Hampton is waiting for their CPC meeting, it had to be put off and, and annual town meeting. Who am I forgetting, Jamie? Westfield, and, and then with East Hampton, we've been going through the meeting process as well. But in the RFP, it is written that if all six municipalities do have to put in the money, or it doesn't move forward.
Okay.
Excellent question.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, any further discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Okay, Barbara? Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counsel Rist?
I move that the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearings, any further discussion? Barbara? Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings are now closed, we have already done the communication from elected boards and officials, and President, Vice President, we will move on to, oh, did I see someone's hand? No, okay, uh, we'll move on to mayor communication, Mayor LaChapelle? Do you have any communication?
Uh, yes, so, uh, Juan, just to speak to, um, uh, where we are with, uh, the Delta variant, or, uh, with the city and town, we're seeing numbers go up. I would just, um, and I was gonna say this regardless, uh, the, I met with, uh, the Board of Health Chair and our Health Director, Bree, um, around policies and how to go forward. My concerns around in-person meetings at, um, this point is, um, a limited number of public, uh, you know, if we space it out, somebody can get there five minutes before the meeting, somebody wants to join after work, how would they know there are no more seats? And how do we say, no, you can't watch it in person? And I do think that that is something to talk to the lawyer about, President Coniff. I would encourage you to reach out to the lawyer in conjunction with the Health Director, who is also, the Health Director and the Chair of the Board of Health are working on the, the policy around, um, masks, um, and health orders. Uh, the, um, I too have gotten several calls, um, for and against masks and all of that. Overall, the tone of all those calls is that people just wanna know what's gonna happen. And, and I would urge the thought to be held by all of us is, we don't know. You know, we've already identified, and I say we as a, um, as, as a country, um, overall, that the Delta variant truly is, is real, but already there's a Delta A variant, um, that is, um, in the United States. So I appreciate everybody wanting to be in person. person. However, at the end of this, and I I think it's a very long time, anybody who wanted to attend a meeting, I believe it's our civic responsibility to make sure as many people as possible are here at the end of this. And we all have to kind of hold our breath and make sure we get through this. Additionally, even those who are vaccinated, it's very clear with if you are health compromised in some conditions, health conditions with a mask and fully vaccinated, you might be more susceptible to getting a breakthrough case, which are very small. I would also say, I think it was published today that breakthrough through cases through the state is 0.8%. And the the uptick we we are seeing overall are from those who are unvaccinated and indeed could catch it from somebody who is vaccinated but is carrying or shedding the Delta. The the virus, whether it's original COVID, whether it's Alpha, whether it's Delta A, whatever it is. That said, I I wouldn't want to see public meetings to happen. And we have to pull that back. I think it's very confusing for the public. We saw this happen with the schools as they were trying to navigate in school, out of school masks, no masks, testing. I would also remind folks that we're not in a state of emergency and on the city level and also the state level. And the governor right now is saying communities can do whatever they want to or feel they need to. That's very confusing and is counter indicated by science, which has said in so many different world words that COVID-19 doesn't actually react or recognize geographic boundaries. And it actually goes wherever the it wants to go. So wide roll the the dice on on that. The orders that we'll see out of the Health Department will be health orders that are directed by MGL and not something that is an emergency order that takes the health order takes a little longer because there is a public process and a Board of Health meeting that will be posted to talk about that. And the last I I would say around public meetings and being in person is that we do have vulnerable employees who fall into that category of those who are vaccinated. We don't know who has held that vaccination stronger than the other and have some very serious health concerns. So their participation in a meeting would be similar to the straw issue where they would have to self identify as one of those populations or feel very uncomfortable that it might look like they're not fulfilling their their civic duty or respond or come to a meeting in person, even if it was just the city council. So I wanted to add those comments. We just had the meeting and that straight out. And again, President Coniff, you could work with our Health Director and maybe go, it'd be more efficient, I think, to have a conference call with the city attorney. The other thing that we're, I will have a press release, but I'm extremely excited. Our AFG grant, which has it's about equipment and staffing for the fire for fire departments. We were awarded a grant to purchase a new ambulance. It's about $235,000. The city has a 5% match to that. So we'll be rolling that out with a press release, I think Friday. But we have got in notification from FEMA and very, very, very competitive. We were pretty sure we would get a no and we'd have to reapply. But with the help of our federal delegation and strong recommendations and Chief Norris being on the phone about every day, we got it. So very exciting. The last is the item listed around the ESCO contract and energy savings and putting that forward formally to city council with all details as well as a request for borrowing or bonding. And I've asked for the full amount, which is 6 million point like 4 million that I mean point 400,000. The project itself, as we've built it out, is $6.1 million. We've added the 300,000 for standard contingency. I'm asking for the full amount, very similar to the school project where you asked for the full amount, but we didn't bond for 100 million, $109 million. The big difference between the the bond for the school, it was a debt exclusion. And this is not a debt exclusion and will be paid out of the general fund. So this is not in addition or adding on to the the taxpayers' burden. It's included in in our our general fund budget. And surely that will be discussed further in our Finance Committee meeting or whenever the the chair sets it. So the June 16th, there was a packet forwarded to the city council with an overview. The original project given to us by Honeywell was $12 million. And we went through that substantial list and a detailed report chose what made more sense and what money where our dollars would get the most return, as well as looking at deferred maintenance in several physical plants in our building. We got it down to 6.1. I feel it's the best use of our money and not a wish list and and look forward to discussing it through the rest of the public process.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Moving on to reports of committees, Council Wrist, Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for the purpose of we did discuss the energy proposal from the mayor at our last meeting. And I want to read for the record a report on that that I gave to the full council, but for the public's knowledge. On August 14th, the Finance Committee met to discuss various topics. We approved the two CPA requests, three to zero, and they're up for public hearing tonight. We also were shown a PowerPoint presentation on the energy savings project the mayor is proposing. It was extensive and contains many remarkable features. In the presentation, we represented a major upgrade to our energy and HVAC systems that is quite wide ranging. It includes energy management upgrades to all municipal HVAC systems. That includes the best filtration possible, new solar energy, and major work on deferred maintenance. This project, in my opinion, is a legacy one that will lead the city in a healthy and energy efficient state in the years to come. I urge all councilors to watch the meeting video to get a sense of the elements of the project from the Honeywell engineers. The committee decided that it had many financial features. We would meet on August 17th to ask the questions on the cost and get more details on the project. I do want to clarify a misunderstanding regarding how the project is to be paid for. As the mayor mentioned, a figure related to property taxes was given. But to be clear, this project cannot be funded by law, Proposition 2 and 1/2, from any new property taxes. It will be funded using the normal revenue stream and/or various funding sources. The treasurer was demonstrating the cost to the average taxpayer as it relates to a balanced budget. That cost will be borne within the normal 2 and 1/2% tax increase the city has allowed and uses every year to cover the inflationary cost of a $46 million business. It does impact the budget in that the cost affects what is available for all budget areas. And the Finance Committee will determine if the cost is worth it and this council as well. Also, there is quite a bit of payback with energy savings payments from Eversource and energy rebates, which reduces the yearly cost of the bond considerably. All these numbers, details of the project and the way it will be paid for will be discussed at the Finance Meeting on August 17th. Since the project requires $6.475 million bond, I do recommend the councilors attend that meeting to ask the questions. I just want to say, quite frankly, this is a big deal. So I do encourage you to watch the video of the meeting this past July 14th, as well as come to our meeting on the 17th. And I'm announcing that's the next Finance Committee meeting. I will now move both this and the other new item for business in one by using a first reading. Request is hereby made for a the amount requested is a $6,475,239 amount to be funded by bonding, to be borrowed or bonded for execution of the 2021 Energy Savings Performance Contract under Mass Department of Energy Resources, established by MGL, Chapter 25A, Section 11I, for the city building to upgrade indoor air quality to post pandemic standards, facility infrastructure improvements, prevent, solve deferred maintenance, drive operational efficiency and cost savings, and add substantial solar capacity to the city's utility profile. I'm also going to read as a first reading a supplemental appropriation, if I can find it, for the police cruiser. I also will read for a first reading a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $65,653.29 to be transferred from County 087 Cannabis Stabilization Fund to be transferred to, excuse me, police account, $65,653.29. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund the purchase of one fully equipped hybrid Mark Cruiser, 221 Ford Interceptor, and the purchase of one laptop computer to be installed on the cruiser. I move that both these items be sent to the Finance Committee for review and both be set for public hearing at September 1st, on September 1st.
I second both motions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move the bonding and borrowing request and the supplemental appropriation to the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Peggy Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Madam President, I I will just just repeat that meeting is August 17th at 5:00 PM by Zoom. Thank you. That concludes, unless I missed something in new business, but I don't believe I did.
Nope, that was it. And and you're setting a public hearing for those two new items, right?
On September 1st, yes.
Okay, got it. Okay. Counsel Pete?
Sorry, in the new items, I see something about the acceptance of a gift.
Are we doing? Going to go to rules.
That's going to rules. Okay, great.
Why? We normally vote those in. I don't remember. Why are we sending it to rules?
Well, we don't have to. I mean, but we're not there yet.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, we can. That's the question. Hang on, everybody. Okay. And you're done with finance, right, Counsel Wrist?
Yes.
Public safety, Counsel Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. We didn't have any meeting yet since the last full city council meeting. But I just want to let everybody know that we have a meeting this Tuesday, August 10th at 7:00 PM. And that concludes.
So was that the 10th, did you say?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appointment, Counselor Rothschild.
Okay, so the Appointment Committee met twice, actually. And we moved to confirm, I mean, we all voted three to zero to to recommend, to confirm. Ken, I, Vecia, I Vecia. He came to our meeting. He's been living in East Hampton 15 years. He really, he's been involved in cultural chaos and other things in the city and is just excited to kind of learn about what the planning board does as an associate member. And he's interested in affordable housing and learning and contributing to the city. So I would move to confirm the following mayoral appointment. Ken Ivecia as an associate member on the planning board with the term expiration 12/31/2023.
Motion second to approve Ken Ivecia to the, I forget now what.
The planning board.
Board. Wow. Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Peggy Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Passes.
I also wanted to add that because of the email glitch, we were not able to meet or get, you know, Elizabeth Wrist's information in time. And that she was just, you know, she, the process just moved her on to becoming a member of the Board of Health. But I do want to say that we did talk about Beth and that she would be, she, we're looking forward to her membership on that board. She's a lifelong resident. She's a PA, a physician assistant at Western Mass for over 12 years. She's worked in addiction medicine and urgent care. So she's worked with opiate addiction and been on the front lines of COVID. So she has a lot to contribute to the Board of Health. We just took a ceremonial vote and voted three to three to zero to recommend her confirmation. So just wanted that on the record. And I'd also want to move the following mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Robert Lee Bell to the ECA with a term expiration 12/31/2023. I just actually, before I go on, I have a quick question. Why are the Parks and Rec two different years? Just for my own clarification, like Brian is 2021 and then Jason 2023.
Because they're filling vacancies.
Okay, thank you. Just wasn't sure. So back to where I was. Robert Lee Bell to the ECA with a term expiration 12/31/2023. Brian Hiltpole to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term ending 12/31/2021. Jason Terrell to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term ending 12/31/2023. Lisa Jaffe is an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term ending 12/31/2022.
Motion second to move four mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Do you, okay, we can do those separate from Hadal.
Oh, do I have Hadal?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we do those separate from Hadal.
Okay, so we'll move those four. Go ahead.
Peggy Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
And Lindsay Rothschild?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I'd also like to move, I move these to the Appointment Committee as well, right?
Yes.
Hadal Patel as the City Auditor with a term expiration May 5, 2024, and Kathy Smith as Assistant City Auditor with a term expiration May 5, 2024.
Motion second to move Hadal Patel and Kathy Smith to the Appointment Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Peggy Coniff?
Aye.
Okay.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 11th at 5:00 PM.
Okay. And just housekeeping wise, what, there's two mayoral appointments on your existing agenda. So one of those was Ken, was the other one Elizabeth? And so those will both fall off going forward. Okay, gotcha. All right. Ordinance, Counsel Derby is not here. Counsel Derby is not here. Counsel Zerit's not here. So Counsel Pete?
Bottom of the barrel. All right. Luckily, there's not much to discuss because this fell to me on short notice. I guess we're going to keep that item on our agenda. I don't know when we're going to meet again. But I think we're going to be moving the proposed Juneteenth Resolution and related amendment to city holiday ordinance to ordinance. So I'll make a motion to do so.
Second.
Motion second to move the proposed Juneteenth Resolution and related amendments to that city holiday ordinance to the Ordinance Committee. Any further discussion?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Peggy Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then I almost forgot, I have. And then, I almost forgot, I have a couple of packages zoning amendments that I submitted. That I'd also like to move along to ordinance, so I will request to do so in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to move zoning amendments to the ordinance committee, any further discussion, Barbara?
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Motion passes.
And I think that concludes.
Can you extend the amendment to city ordinance plastic?
Oh, yeah, good call, thank you, yes, I would like to make a. Well, let's go ahead and make it a ninety day extension. To the amendment to city ordinances, six point two hours prohibition on single use plastics.
Second.
Motion second to extend the city ordinance amendment on plastics for ninety days, any discussion, Barbara?
Uh, Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Passes.
That concludes.
Now we're concluded. Property, Council Flood, I think you were gonna do the.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I. Move the poll location quest on Colonial Avenue to property committee with. Counselors there would like to set a public hearing for that September first.
I'll second.
Motion second to move the petition for a poll location. Poll location to the or property committee and set a public hearing for nine-one. Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Is that it for property? Yep.
This concludes.
All right, rules and government relations. There's a couple of things here, so there's some new business. There is also a request to read and vote on a particular resolution this evening. And then there is the question of the acceptings of the gifts. In my head, I thought that would be something that would need to go to committee, but Council Rist, you're saying. That we could just approve the acceptance of the gifts, the gift this evening.
We have done so in the past and I think Brendan Rogers from C O A is here because there is a great deal of urgency. In accepting this gift because they're down a van. Is it appropriate now to just do this now, Madam President?
Why don't we, yes.
Brendan, it is urgent, correct?
I'm sorry, say it again.
It is an urgent need.
Yeah, so back on June twenty-third, one of our vans was totaled. An accident, luckily, there were no passengers on board, but this created a deficit for our folks that. Really rely on wheelchair accessible vans, so we need to get back up to speed. And in the process of, you know, trying to figure out where we could get a new vehicle, I was in touch with Sanders Sheen for the last three or four weeks. From the P V T A, and they actually happen to have E three fifty that is very similar to the one that we just lost. And they're willing to donate it to the city for nothing. And I feel like that would get us back up to speed. And we desperately need it now, so I'm hoping that City Council will approve of the donation from P V T A. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Were you prepared to make the motion, Dan?
Sure, I move that the city council accept the gift pursuant to provisions of Massachusetts general laws. Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A. Approval is hereby given for the acceptance of the following gifts to the city of East Hampton. The donation of a two thousand sixteen Ford F. E three fifty wheelchair accessible van from the P V T A to the city of East Hampton Council on Aging.
Gratefully second that motion.
Motion is second to accept the gift of a wheelchair accessible van.
Brendan has a question or?
Yes, I see that, thank you for your help.
I'm sorry, guys, there was a slight typo on that, it's a two thousand fifteen.
Oh, well, that changes everything.
Yeah, I I'm just, I'm just, I made a typo and I had to, you know, put it out there.
Makes. Okay, so we have a motion.
It is a two thousand fifteen, would that be acceptable, I think?
We have a motion in a second for a two thousand and fifteen Ford E three fifty wheelchair accessible van as a gift. Any further conversation?
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Motion passed, enjoy your van Brendan for the next forty-eight hours.
Madam President.
Yes, Council Rist.
Since Brendan is here and smiling, I think I speak for the entire council. And wishing you good luck on your new job, but we are very sad to see you go. You've done remarkable work for the C O A and we thank you for your service to the city of East Hampton. Congratulations.
I second that.
We don't even need to vote on it, Brendan, we 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 are all unanimous and our thanks for all the work you've done and. And the the help, I, the seniors in this community are very beholden to you and. All the work, especially during the pandemic, it was heroic and we thank you and we're going to miss you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck in your next adventure.
Still living and working in town, so you guys will see me, no doubt.
Great, awesome. Okay, so we have a few things for the Rules Committee, Council Peak, and I know there is one that. There was a request to have that voted on tonight.
Yeah, so let's start with that if you don't mind. So, yeah, I was approached, actually, Council Gomez brought to me an effort. That the A C L U has been very involved in to get a spatial recognition ban. On the statewide level that is, I've read the language, very similar to what we did locally. I said, you know, there there was a petition that was going around and I signed it and I thought, well, I could do one better, we've already discussed this at length. We've had people come in and testify about facial recognition. And as a community that has been a leader in sort of regulating this very dangerous technology. I thought that our legislative delegation might actually want to hear from us. So while I think a lot of resolutions are quite symbolic. I thought that this one actually might be something that there might be some people who would really want to hear from them. So I wrote up a little resolution and my hope, if there wasn't any objection, is that. Since we already discussed this matter at length, when we were, as a matter of local policy and. While since we discussed the issue of facial recognition, facial surveillance technology at length. That just because this is something that's in committee right now, if there wasn't any. Objection that we could vote on this on the first reading, so I'm happy to read the resolution, but I just wanted to get a sense. Is there anyone who that's like immediately objects to that notion? No, okay. So should I, yeah, I'll just, I'll read it, it's it's a relatively quick resolution and I can share my screen for it. But just to sort of. Get a sense of, oh, sorry.
Let me make you a co-host. Go ahead.
Okay. So should I just read it in full?
Wait, yeah, please.
Okay, so whereas the city council of the city of East Hampton unanimously approved an ordinance. Banning the city's use of facial recognition technology in July of twenty twenty. And whereas that ban applies to all city agencies. And whereas in December twenty twenty, Governor Baker signed into law. Chapter two fifty-three of the Acts of twenty twenty, which contains several provisions pertaining to the government's use of facial. Recognition technology. And whereas the existing law only regulates facial recognition technology as used by law enforcement agencies. And whereas the existing law neither prohibits nor regulates the use of technology by non-police entities. Like those with authority over schools and public transportation. And whereas the existing law does not prohibit or regulate the use of facial recognition technologies for the purpose. The purposes of surveillance of public spaces like streets and parks. And whereas the existing law does not restrict which public agencies. Can acquire and possess facial recognition system other than naming the state police and registrar of motor vehicles. And whereas when it comes to facial recognition searches, the existing law merely requires law enforcement. Shows a search is relevant and material to investigation of any type of crime. And whereas the existing law does not provide any due process protections for persons identified by facial recognition systems. And whereas the existing law does not provide any enforcement mechanism to ensure compliance with the law. And whereas the existing law only regulates facial recognition and does not mention or provide. Protections governing those, governing other remote biometric recognition technologies. That are as risky and harmful as facial recognition. And whereas the Massachusetts State Legislature is currently considering. H one thirty-five, an act to regulate face surveillance sponsored by Representatives David Rogers and Orlando Ramos. And S forty-seven, an act to regulate facial surveillance sponsored by Senator Cynthia Cream. And whereas this legislation would lead to a standard of regulation for the Commonwealth, which is in more closely in keeping. With the standard set by our ordinance. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council recommends that the Massachusetts State Legislature pass. H one thirty-five and S forty-seven and that the act be signed into law by Governor Baker. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall copy or shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent. To State Representative Daniel Carey, State Senator John Velas and Governor Charlie Baker. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve the resolution on facial recognition, any further discussion? Council Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to say thank you to Council Peak for bringing this forward, I think it's really important. For our community, when I say our community, I'm talking about Puerto Ricans, Latinos. Black community because this technology is really biased, is really discriminatory. And we have to take action and if the the state take action with this is 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 great and I'm. More than than glad to say thank you for everybody who's going to vote yes for this resolution because we we need to send a message. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Great, and now I have a little bit of housekeeping stuff for rules. So first of all, we met. Oh, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago and. We actually ended up moving, discussing a few things that just due to developments, we decided. We can move off of our agenda, so the first one was the resolution proposal for a payment in lieu of taxes. Or pilot program, that was something that was initially submitted by Counselor Lynch. After. He left, there was some thought there might be some interest from other counselors in. Maybe picking it up and there there might be in the future, but just. With developments being what they are and with, you know, things having changed what they are. Like, we want to dismiss this without prejudice so that somebody else can bring it up if they if they'd like to in the future, but at this time. It just seems like it would be, given how long it's been there, it seems like it would be the right thing to do to dismiss this without prejudice and let somebody else. Take up their own version of this if they so choose, so with that in mind, I will make a motion to dismiss this item without prejudice.
Motion second to remove from the Rules and Government Relations Agenda, the proposal for a pilot. Program, any further discussion, Barbara?
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski. Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
The second one that we also decided was. The council rule requiring anti-bias training. There were a couple of developments here that led Counselor Zara, who was the initial person proposing this, to feel like it was okay. To remove without prejudice, one item was that the mayor has implemented. That has made anti-bias training available to people, there was also in the course of sort of the follow-up for this, there was some concern. About whether requiring that training of counselors was in fact legal, so. The general thought of the committee and of Counselors there was that it should be removed without prejudice, so I'll make a motion to do so now.
Second.
Motion second to remove the anti-bias training request of the Agenda of Rules and Government Relations. Any further conversation?
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
And Erica Flood.
Hi.
Okay.
Great, um, so the next thing is we actually did discuss. The council rule eleven H amendment to the appointment process. Which the appointment committee had sent to us, we looked it over and had no objections, so I don't know. Counselor Rothschild, if you would like to. Go over that anyway, but we were, we were prepared and we voted three to zero to approve that.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I just want to say that we've been using that process for the for the. Past several appointments, in terms of like sending, we're sending a standard email to each. Each not, this happens to me then, each appointment and with the same questions and then they come. And they've been showing up at our meetings and then we ask all the questions as needed and desired, so we're not really restricted in our questions. I find the process has actually been very educational for those coming through because it kind of explains. Like, you know, they're going to be with us, then they're going to go there, then it's going to be back there and they, and it's been. And I think it will just kind of create a consistency, it has and a positive, and also just a template for. New people coming to the appointment committee and you're like, okay, what do I do, it's like you have, you have a guidebook, so I think that's helpful too. My fellow appointment committee members have anything to add?
I I would just concur that it's, it feels like it's been pretty smooth being new member to the appointment committee, it's given me a nice like. Understanding of how it could work, I don't know what was happening before, but it it just feels very. Easy to manage and navigate for folks, if they can't come, then they've been responding via email, which is also great to just. Have that interaction with each applicant. So I think it has been smooth and I thank you for your support in supporting those changes.
Great. So if there's not anything else at this time, I would make a motion to approve. Council Rule eleven H amendment to the appointment process.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the Council Rule eleven H amendment to the appointment process, any further discussion? Barbara?
AP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Okay. So there's a few things that. I want to introduce to the agenda, but before I say that, I just want to say we're going to be meeting. This coming Monday, the ninth, to discuss the resolution regarding the decriminalization. Decriminalization of therapeutic psychedelic plants, that's a mouthful. And the, in terms of the proposed rule twenty for remote participation. We discussed it and everyone's sort of on the same board, but just given. we discussed it and everyone's sort of on the same board, but just given that it's such a evolving situation, it's just gonna be on the back burner for a little while. In fact, crap, I should probably put an extension on that because it's gonna expire before we, yeah, let me just go ahead and do that.
Both of those, do both of those at the same time?
Could I request a 60-day extension to both the, both of the, the Resolution Regarding the Decriminalization of Therapeutic Psychedelic Plants and the Proposed Amendment to Council Rules to Add Rule 20 Remote Participation?
Second.
Motion second to extend by 60 days, did you say?
Yeah.
60 days. The Resolution and the Amendment to Council Rules, Rule 20. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild. Okay, I see.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Salem Dirt, whoops. Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Was that an I, JP?
Hi.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay, and finally, Counselor Derby asked that I introduce his Climate Emergency Resolution to, to, to rules. And so I would do so in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to move the Climate Emergency Resolution to rules. Any further discussion?
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi. All right. That was an adventure, guys. Thank you. Thus concludes.
Okay. Um, Tom, we meet at 8:00, 9:00 on August 9th at what time?
6:00 PM.
6:00, okay. Thank you. All for the creation of Zoom meetings. Rank choice voting, is there anything about that that we need to know about that committee?
No, not at this time, I don't think.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we're just working on our plan for voter education right now.
Okay. Senior Tax Workoff Committee, Council Kuzinski, I spoke with Brendan and he feels we need to have a meeting to talk about the process because now they're a little bit through it. So what are your thoughts on that?
Happy to talk with everyone about seeing what a timeframe might work outside this meeting. But I'm, Madam President, just to be happy to report that in talking to Brendan and the others, there appears to be 12 individuals who have applied for positions. And that's exciting. And actually, one person is far enough along that they've started work. So we're in the throes of all of this and that's very exciting. Actually, a little earlier than I think we all anticipated.
Totally, yeah.
This happening, so happy to report that information. And we'll send out an email about schedule.
Okay, great. And the Ordinance Review Committee, Council Rothschild. Any updates?
The next meeting, we had a meeting and we're still working on our final report, which we want to have for the full council on the second meeting in September. My next meeting is September 7th at 6:30.
Okay.
Thank you, thus concludes.
All right. Then I think we're good. And we've done new business, old business, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, Barbara.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.